Do you want to get Stephanie's presentation? That's ready. I'm going to call. I know, I see that. Okay, I would like to call to order. No, oh wait, I'm trying. I would like to call to order this work session in the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on our communications plan and branding guide. Please show in attendance are the Forest Grove City Councilors, our communication manager, Stephanie Fleischer, and our city manager, Jesse Vander Zanin, with audience members in the auditorium.
Okay, I'm going to go through this pretty fast, but I think it's pretty clear. So for this work session, we'll be discussing a communications and branding guide for the city. This is what we're covering today. How the branding communications plan relates to 2040, the purpose, background, some definitions, how the branding and communication process works, and a cost estimate. This is how the branding and communications plan relates to the 2040 plan. So going through this process directly relates to action items for 10 and for 11, and creates a foundation for action item 113, 117, and 237. And the purpose tonight, we're seeking feedback from council on scope, process, and funding for a communications plan and branding guide. So this is our current inventory. So we have our current logo, a tourism logo, and brand guide. And then we also have the Forest Grove communications and engagement strategy. That last one was created before I got here, so I've just been following it since I started. Before we get in-depth, I'd like to define some of the items we're discussing tonight. The first is a logo. I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, but it's a graphic mark that represents an entity or product. Everyone can have a logo. Not everyone can have a brand. There is a difference, and they are not the same. Communications plan is a strategic document that outlines how a municipality will communicate. A brand guide lays out the brand, proper use of logo, colors, typefaces, et cetera. The communications plan and brand guide work together to create the Forest, the city of Forest Grove brand. And the communications policy is a formal guideline that an organization uses to govern its internal and external communications. The current Forest Grove communications plan and engagement strategy is kind of a mix of both. My hope is that we get to separate those two and have them be two separate documents. A communications plan is a strategic roadmap that defines how, when, why, and what an organization communicates. Information can include vision, goals, an audience breakdown, alignment with strategic plan, or in our case, the 2040 vision, communication objectives, and SMART goals. SMART stands for specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound goals. A SMART goal could include increasing citizen engagement, or improving public awareness of particular projects, key messaging, channel selection, meaning like, is it print, is it social, is it both, strategy, and of course, schedule. Scheduling and timing are just two important elements in comms. A communications plan can help guide the creation of a communications calendar, and that calendar provides a monthly, monthly and seasonal focuses, which allows staff or the, you know, comms team to plan and schedule content in advance while leaving room for emergency messaging, such as like a power outage. A comms plan can also include a crisis comms communication plan, measurement and evaluation, and of course, staff roles. And then having a communications plan provides structure, clarity, and consistency in how messages are shared. The plan ensures clear and consistent messaging using consistent language, tone, and facts. It defines our goals and audience, identifying who we're trying to reach, ensuring messages are purposeful, improves efficiency, so we'll know what to say, when to say it, and how to say it. As we know, good communication builds connection. A plan helps ensure residents feel informed, included, and heard, provides a framework for measuring success, allowing the communications team to evaluate what's working and what messages need adjusting. Communications plan, again, also helping a crisis, can provide protocols and messaging templates, so the response is timely, accurate, and professional. So when we talk about branding, we're not talking about just a logo or a color palette. We're talking about creating a shared sense of identity for everyone who calls Forest Grove home. A strong city brand helps residents and business owners feel connected. It gives us a shared narrative. Branding also helps set us apart from neighboring cities. It highlights what's unique about Forest Grove, our values, our history, our vision for the future. It also ensures that every, everything we communicate, whether it's on social media, at an event, or in a city publication, speaks in a consistent and recognizable voice. Or did I miss one? The community's thoughts, feelings, and ideas gathered during the 2040 outreach are not currently reflected in Forest Grove's brand. At present, we have a logo more than a true brand identity. A new communications plan and branding guide will work together to establish a cohesive Forest Grove brand, and ensure the city's programs, goals, and achievements, again, especially those outlined in the 2040 plan, are communicated effectively. And here's some logo examples. You'll notice Hillsborough has a good selection of logo variations and lockups. Then of course, you know, Tiger Bend, Ashland, I'm sure everybody has seen these. So this is a brand at work. And before we look at the following examples, full disclosure, I did not work for the city of Royal Oak when I lived in Michigan, nor am I familiar with the company that created its brand. I'm sharing this example because it's a strong illustration of how a city brand can be consistently and effectively applied across an entire organization and its departments. Royal Oak adopted this brand in 2013, and after more than a decade, it still feels fresh and contemporary. You might be wondering why I'm highlighting a city in the Midwest. After research, after researching, I wasn't able to find a similarly strong, well-executed city brand currently in use in our region. This gives Forest Grove a unique opportunity to become a possible model for successful municipal branding. This is just more of the wayfinding and place-making, which is mentioned a few times throughout the 2040 plan. And in these examples, I believe it is applied in a SMART, resident, and visitor-friendly And again, we see the brand applied to a gateway sign and park signs. I'd like to point out that park signs are tall, so people walking or driving to a specific park can see the marker from a distance. The communications plan brings all departments under one policy to ensure clear, consistent messaging across the city. The branding guide provides direction for using the city's visual identity. Parks and Recreation and the library will have approved variations to reflect their unique audiences while staying connected to the overall brand. Utilities and public safety departments, which is light and power, police and fire, will maintain separate branding. This follows best practices, as these areas have strong professional identities and recruitment needs that differed from general civic messaging. So staff anticipates one, this being a one-year process, beginning in November 2025, I realize that begins on Saturday, and concluding in November 2026. I do have a timeline on the next slide. The RFP will likely include development of a communications plan, logo design and variations, a branding guide covering typefaces, colors, and usage standards, a business suite with items like business cards and letterhead, creation of official city seal. To support the creative process, the 2040 outreach data will be available as a resource. And we could also say that the community survey feedback could too. Input may, input may be gathered through an ad hoc committee made up of board and commission members before adoption. Staff will hold a work session with city council to review the materials. Once adopted, a rollout calendar will guide implementation across all departments. And this is the timeline. Again, it, you know, this is what we're estimating, so this could change, but I will try my best to stick to it. I'll begin writing the RFP in November. It's best to post after the holidays to increase response rate, so that'll get posted in January. We'll review the proposals February through March. After company selection, we can begin working on the communications plan and branding guide. When everything is finished, we'll present the new brand to council and solicit feedback, and from there, we can move to adoption. Jesse will discuss the funding aspect in more detail, but first, I'd like to explain how we arrived at these numbers. I contacted three companies to obtain quotes. I explained what we'd like to do, what we're trying to accomplish, and of course, included the listed items, like a communication, like we're in need of a communications plan, brand development, including different variations for library and parks and rec, a brand development testing, that's with the ad hoc committee, and then a brand style guide.
Thank you, Stephanie, Mayor, members of the council. With regard to funding, we have identified some funding in the current budget. It was former economic development monies that were associated with an enterprise zone that came back to the city. They are eligible for this purpose. They are only eligible for projects that are of an economic development nature, a communications plan, and a branding guide, or of an economic development nature. It's 62,000, I think it's $62,900. Not to say that it's going to cost that much, but that's how much eligibility of funding exists in the budget now.
And with that, any questions? Okay, any questions for Stephanie? Counselor Felkner?
You have to turn it on, I think. Now it's on. Could we go back to the slide that has our current logos on it? Does the, do you think the RFP, are we, is the suggestion that we, that there will be time and money spent on revamping these? Or could we maybe provide some feedback that maybe more time on the, on the real recipe stuff, and maybe a little bit less time on the logo? How long ago were these done?
So the tourism one was completed, or I believe officially adopted, 21. That one's still relatively new. I am not sure about our three leaves. Or I have a date for the communication strategy, but that is escaping me right now. I'm not sure. Maybe 2014? Well, how long have you been here? I feel like it happened the first year you were here. You said, hey, there's not a, like, an adopted logo. So 10 years.
Okay, so the three leaves, maybe 10. The tree is maybe five.
I think that, I think the three leaves has been here longer. I don't think that it was kind of formalized until approximately 10 years ago, but it was here prior to that. I don't know that we were recommending changing the tourism logo. I think we were looking at just the city brand, not to confuse it with the tourism brand.
And how old, you said that that RO, the one that you, that was pretty successful, you felt like?
That was from 2013, officially adopted.
And it's still in use?
Correct.
So 12 years?
12 years.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't see why they would be changing it anytime soon. Those things are usually here to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, I think if I'm understanding Counselor Felkner correctly, it's a question, would we send this current logo with the RFP saying like, hey, we have this?
I, it would be mentioned in the RFP if somebody asks to see it previously, then all, everybody who's submitting it, it's just, I don't see why, why we couldn't include it in.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where my, my question really lies is in a concern that there would be a lot of money spent on redeveloping a logo that's probably okay, and not more time spent on what I think would be strategically more valuable to staff, which is, you know, sort of the, the work product about, you know, the communications plan and strat, and how to implement, you know, and?
I think the time between the two is even. And I think having a good visual identity, if you have a strong one, then that makes your communications plan even better. But if you're using something like this, that, I'm not going to lie, is very hard to put on anything. If you have something like this, it doesn't, it doesn't help the communications plan as much as something newer, fresher, more contemporary, if that makes sense.
I don't know if you need to, but do you think you need to? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Guffston.
I think also, and I'm not positive on this, that it's best practice to change your logo. I'm not sure how often they recommend, just because it does keep it fresh and it brings new attention to it.
Maybe for private companies, but municipalities operate a little differently, because we are funded, or how we are funded, rather, as opposed to private business. Because like Adidas, I think in like, the last maybe 15 years, they've had three revamps. And they can do that, but I don't know, I don't know if it's good for municipalities to do it as.
I'm real excited about this. I think it's the foundation of kind of implementing our 2040 plan, is really like shoring some of these things up. And, I mean, just a brief little history, but, you know, our, like, efforts towards better community engagement and communication, I think, are, it's pretty young. I think five years ago, we hired our first communication staff person within City Hall. And I would like to say the communications team, Stephanie and Joyce have done a tremendous job, and we're seeing the effects, right? More people showed up to the state of the city. We had our first CIVICS Academy. And I think our communication plan, like, needs to catch up with that, and, you know, because we just, and so I'm really excited. I think that this is something that will help us implement that 2040 plan, and is the foundation to do all the action items within it. So that's how, I feel pretty confident and excited about this. Any other, so what do you need from us to move, or from this meeting?
I think we were just looking for a general consensus to move forward with an RFP that has both the kind of scope and process that Stephanie has generally outlined. To kind of address your concern, Counselor Felkner, we can also put things in an RFP that ask certain questions, and so I think we can get a variation of proposals back.
Any other questions or comments? Are we good? Is there consensus to move forward with this? Okay, cool. So I'm going to, right on time, I'm going to adjourn this work session, but we're going to start our meeting five minutes late. We're going to- Question on the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on liquor license process, and no public comment will be taken, and the council will take no formal action. And our city recorder, Mariah Woods, is going to present.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your time tonight, council. I'm here to speak to you about liquor licenses. We have a fairly straightforward agenda, so I'm going to jump right in. The primary 2040 action item that's been identified as being tied to this is 1.6, strengthen the city's partnership with local small businesses to support local distribution and entrepreneurship. The purpose of this work session is to consider revisions to the city's liquor licensing process. Staff has received feedback from local businesses that the timeline of the current process can be an obstacle to conducting business in Forest Grove, and it has additionally been identified as a strain on staff resources. As some background, the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission, OLCC, is responsible for the issuance of liquor licenses in the state of Oregon. Statutes do allow local governments to make recommendations that the OLCC may take into consideration for granting or refusing a license. This is kind of an important clarification, because the city does not issue liquor licenses. The city can make a recommendation on whether they believe that OLCC should or should not, but OLCC has ultimate decision, ultimate purview over that. So local government has 45 days from when notice is given to respond, and must have valid basis for adverse recommendation. The city's current process for making recommendations is laid forth in the city's code of ordinance in section 110.070 through 1999. Unfavorable recommendations are only considered valid if they adhere to the refusal bases enumerated in relevant statutes and administrative rules. So OLCC has very specific rules for when they're allowed to deny or reject a license. And so if the city issues an adverse recommendation, it has to adhere to one of those bases. This is a non-exhaustive list of some of those reasons. And I do want to note that all of these kind of have caveats. So on the last one, it says license premises will be located within 500 feet of certain types of facilities, but in order for that to apply, those facilities have to prove or argue essentially that that license being in effect there would impact their ability to offer their services. So, and unfavorable recommendations are not considered valid if they're based on things like parking limitation, traffic zoning issues, even things like saturation. So if the city feels that there's too many of those types of businesses in that area, OLCC does not consider that a valid basis for an adverse recommendation. We're going to go into the current process. I have three main categories for this. One is for a new or a change of ownership application. These are, so the change of ownership is usually if there's an existing license in place, or existing business, and they're selling to someone else. That's most of the new ones that we receive, and then new is obviously for an entirely new business. So for that process, the application and payment is submitted to the city recorder, staff checks for valid city business license, or an application for a city business license. We forward it to the police department for a background check, and for the police chief's recommendation, and then it's then brought to the council for final action. If it's favorable, a favorable recommendation from the chief, it's just added to the consent agenda, and unfavorable is scheduled as a public hearing. Once it's approved, if it is approved, then it goes back to the applicant for them to submit to OLCC. We have a three to four week estimate timeframe for this. The longest I've seen is five weeks, and that was due to the council being in their kind of summer recess. There is a $100 fee for the new license, and $75 for a change, which is capped by state statute. As far as this, I, oh, I guess kind of more related to the last slide, sorry. In speaking with the police chief about this process, he let us know that in his entire time in making these recommendations, he's only recommended that one license not be granted, due to the history of the person applying, and OLCC did still grant that license. So they do, again, have ultimate say in that. The next process is that for annual renewals. This is the one that is primarily more of a strain on staff resources. The OLCC sends a renewal notice to the city recorder every year, staff checks for valid city business licenses, and then mails notices to those businesses, because they have to submit to us a new background check form. Those applications and payment are submitted to me, and then it gets sent to the police department for review. They make the recommendation, and then it is again brought before the city council. The numbers for renewals have remained pretty consistent, so we had 55 the last two years, and 54 the year before that. It's a $35 renewal fee, again, capped by state statute, which I, by my assessment, I guess we haven't had an official fee assessment, but that is capped by state statute, and I would not say that it generally covers the staff time for, for the renewals. The last process is for special events. I do want to make the distinction that this is different than an event permit. This, these are just special event liquor licenses. The process for this is applications and payments are submitted to the city recorder, staff checks for valid city business license. If they're not a business in the city with a current city business license, they're required to obtain a temporary business license, and then I sign them and return them to the applicant. I processed, I don't have an exact number, but it was around 110 in 2024, was when I had the most complete numbers, which sounds like a lot, but there are 40 just for Forest Grove Uncorked, and they each have to submit separate permits for that. It's $20 for a special event fee, and then an additional 35 for a temporary business license fee. Of those 210, I would say 90 to 100 of them are for community events, so things like the Uncorked or Oktoberfest. Very few of those are for private events. So then as just some comparisons for other cities in Oregon, cities where the city manager or designee are authorized to make recommendations directly to OLCC are Hillsborough, Gresham, Eugene, Salem, Kaiser, and Troutdale, or Troutdale. And then the only responsive city that, that the council still makes the decision is Seaside. Cities that don't require background checks for renewals, not, and don't include renewals on the council agenda, are listed, and none of the cities surveyed conduct background checks for renewals of licenses. So there's still background checks for the initial application, but not every year. Bend is the only of the cities that responded that includes liquor license renewals on the council agenda, and they do it just as a way to notify the public and give them a chance to comment. Special events licenses are for the most part processed administratively, as we do, but most cities, or all the cities who responded, do not require business licenses for them. So for discussion, discussion, staff is asking the city council to consider the following recommend, updates to Forest Grove's liquor license process. The first is to authorize the city manager or designee to make favorable recommendations to OLCC for new or change of ownership applications. We estimate that this would take that process for a new applicant from three to four weeks to one to two, so that would pretty significantly lower that. What most cities in this case do is either give the option for, if there's an adverse recommendation, that that automatically goes before the council, or the applicant can have the option to appeal to the council before that adverse recommendation is submitted. The, the next recommendation is, again, for the city manager or designee to be authorized to make favorable recommendations for renewals. So again, this would just allow us to not have the renewals on the council agenda. The city manager or designee would allow, be allowed to just submit those directly to the OLCC. In addition to that, we're recommending removing the background check requirement for annual renewals, as again, this does take a lot more work for staff. Often what cities will do in this case, or sometimes, is have the police, when the OLCC sends that list of renewals, that list gets sent to the police chief, and they can flag any that have had persistent issues, if there's been a lot of problems, and in, at that business that fall under those valid bases for an adverse recommendation, the police chief can just flag those and send those to the, the city manager. And again, that would go through that process of public hearing. And then finally, removing the business license requirement for special event liquor licenses. The business license more than doubles the fee that, the business that applicants are paying to have those special events, and that is just more of a deterrent, and again, a little bit more processing time for staff. So I'm open to counsel feedback.
Okay, any questions for?
I do have a question there. So the background check, if we remove that, right?
Only for renewals, so there would still be a background check if they, when they first apply.
Yeah, but for renew, renewals, a lot of things can happen within a year, right?
Yeah.
So what you described would be having like an informal check, background check done, or, you know, yearly check done by the chief.
Yeah, it would be more, in that case, it would be more based on if, if things have been happening at the business, because obviously they have the, the knowledge and the records to know if there's been a lot of, you know, if there've been a lot of those valid bases, the issues happening at the business. So it wouldn't be the background check aspect.
All right, but it would be selected according to that, meaning that there could be some businesses that would not have this background check, because there haven't been any issues that the police has heard of, correct?
Yeah.
I'm not in agreement. I think a background check is important, and I'm sorry, I'm not to give staff more work, really. I am so sorry, because I don't like doing that, but I think background checks are important.
Yeah, I, I think that there's still a background check initially, correct?
Yes, but I mean, on a yearly-
Like every year?
Well, is that what they're saying here, that they're, they're getting rid of the, of the yearly renewal background?
Yeah, and can you go, can you swap, who's running the PowerPoint? Are you running the PowerPoint? Even a parent is doing both, all your jobs, okay. But so, yeah, can you go to municipalities that have, no background checks for renewals, not include on council agendas, Hillsborough? I mean, I guess I'm wondering there, the majority of comparables don't do that. And even for me as a, I mean, even for me as a teacher, as like a public employee that has 13 year olds, like my background check is before I get hired. I don't go and get a background check every year I teach.
Yeah, but this is distributing some goods to the community, right? It's to sell things, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with that being said, even if somebody didn't pass a background check, can OLCC still give them their liquor license? So it's kind of a mute point there, like when it comes to that. You know, you know what I mean? So no matter what we decide, OLCC has the final say. So whether we do a background check or not, they can, OLCC can say whatever and still do liquor license.
Right, I don't know that for certain though, right? It's a possibility that they are, there is a high likelihood that they would approve it.
They can, they can, OLCC can do whatever they want at this.
Yeah.
So whatever we decide on a background check is null and void because they get the final say. So it might make us feel warm and fuzzy to do it, but it's not necessarily doing anything when they have final say over it.
So many imperfect things about this overall system, you know, and this I find to be one of them.
No.
When it comes to selling liquor or something else, you know, eh, I don't know. I just tend to be a little bit more speculative on things like that. And that's just me, you know, in my opinion.
I would agree with you. I would agree with, I would agree with that statement, like um whenever I volunteer, because I don't teach, but I have to, I had, I just had a background check today with school district because I coach, so I have to have that every single year. And I get that, but what this is saying, what OLCC does is different. They can give the license no matter what the background is.
So basically, we've never had any, any power, basically, we've never had.
We get the, it's essentially, that's, I mean.
Is that what you're saying, right?
Recommendation, I mean, I, I, we have a state licensing board. So what we're doing is not only doesn't matter, it's a redundancy of something that doesn't matter. So like we have a licensing board by the state. It's like the city wouldn't recommend nursing licenses. You're licensed by the state. We have a body that does this already. And so I find these things completely redundant. And also, like you said, the only time we've ever had an adverse recommendation, it was overruled by OLCC because they have their own process.
Well, you know, that's, yeah, if you put it that way, that it is redundant and we've never had any power, it was suspicious, right?
Yeah.
Then, okay, I understand and it's sad, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if it streamlines the process and allow, I mean, I, I think what everyone said is true. Like, I'm okay with this. I feel like it makes sense to move in this direction. But does anyone, are we, I mean?
No, OLCC, like OLCC changed to an online system called CAMP and it is ridiculously fast. Now, it used to be back in the day, it was like, it would be a five to six weeks per turnaround. And now it's like a couple of days at most. So this, maybe that's what you get when you get the businesses that put in their liquor license. They seriously type it in, fill out the forms, it's sent, and then they have to wait on us to do it. And so they're, we're, they're waiting for like four or five weeks or whenever it gets put on our agenda. And so they're just sitting here turning their wheels, waiting for it when OLCC has basically already approved it.
Yeah, council.
There's been several businesses that I've talked to in the downtown that have had that, that same problem, especially when they find out or they've been invited to an event last minute for whatever purpose. And, and we're kind of the, we're the bottleneck.
I mean, I did two liquor licenses last, probably like not even a month ago, and they were done within 24 hours. It's super, super fast now, so it's like we should keep up with what OLCC is doing and kind of move as fast as we possibly can.
Oh, yeah, I think there's consensus.
So for our next steps, um, this does require an ordinance as it will um need some code changes. The, so the staff with a review of city attorney will draft that language. OLCC does typically review those revisions to make sure that, that they approve the process that we um, that we wanna go to. Um, so then staff will return once we have that approval with an ordinance for council consideration at a duly noticed public hearing.
Well, thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Okay, this work session is adjourned.
We go home now. We're out 39 minutes early.
Do you want to get her presentation up? Right, do you want to get Stephanie's presentation up? Do you want to get Stephanie's presentation up so it's ready?
I'm going to call, I know, I see that. Okay, I would like to call to order, no, oh wait, I'm trying. I would like to call to order this work session in the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on our communications plan and branding guide. Please show in attendance are the Forest Grove City councilors, our communication manager, Stephanie Fleischer, and our city manager, Jesse Vander Zanin, with audience members in the auditorium.
Okay, I'm going to go through this pretty fast, but I think it's pretty clear. So for this work session, we'll be discussing a communications and branding guide for the city. This is what we're covering today. How the branding communications plan relates to 2040, the purpose, background, some definitions, how the branding and communication process works, and a cost estimate. This is how the branding and communications plan relates to the 2040 plan. So going through this process directly relates to action items for 10 and for 11 and creates a foundation for action item 113, 117, and 237. And the purpose tonight, we're seeking feedback from council on scope, process, and funding for a communications plan and branding guide. So this is our current inventory. So we have our current logo, a tourism logo, and brand guide. And then we also have the Forest Grove Communications and Engagement Strategy. That, the last one was created before I got here. So I've just been following it since I started. Before we get in-depth, I'd like to define some of the items we're discussing tonight. The first is a logo. I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, but it's a graphic mark that represents an entity or product. Everyone can have a logo. Not everyone can have a, there is, there is a difference, and they are not the same. Communications Plan is a strategic document that outlines how a municipality will communicate. A brand guide lays out the brand, proper use of logo, colors, typefaces, et cetera. The communications plan and brand guide work together to create the Forest, the city of Forest Grove brand. And the communications policy is a formal guideline that an organization uses to govern its internal and external communications. The current Forest Grove Communications Plan and Engagement Strategy is kind of a mix of both. My hope is that we get to separate those two and have them be two separate documents. A communications plan is a strategic roadmap that defines how, when, why, and what an organization communicates. Information can include vision, goals, an audience breakdown, alignment with strategic plan, or in our case, the 2040 vision, communication objectives, and SMART goals. SMART stands for specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound goals. A SMART goal could include increasing citizen engagement or improving public awareness of particular projects, key messaging, channel selection, meaning like, is it print, is it social, is it both? Strategy, and of course, schedule. Scheduling and timing are just two important elements in comms. A communications plan can help guide the creation of a communications calendar, and that calendar provides a monthly, monthly and seasonal focuses, which allows staff or the, you know, comms team to plan and schedule content in advance while leaving room for emergency messaging, such as like a power outage. A comms plan can also include a crisis comms communication plan, measurement and evaluation, and of course, staff roles. And then having a communications plan provides structure, clarity, and consistency in how messages are shared. The plan ensures clear and consistent messaging using consistent language, tone, and facts. It defines our goals and audience, identifying who we're trying to reach, ensuring messages are purposeful, improves efficiency, so we'll know what to say, when to say it, and how to say it. As we know, good communication builds connection. A plan helps ensure residents feel informed, included, and heard, provides a framework for measuring success, allowing the communications team to evaluate what's working and what messages need adjusting. A communications plan, again, also helping a crisis, can provide protocols and messaging templates, so the response is timely, accurate, and professional. So when we talk about branding, we're not talking about just a logo or a color palette. We're talking about creating a shared sense of identity for everyone who calls Forest Grove home. A strong city brand helps residents and business owners feel connected. It gives us a shared narrative. Branding also helps set us apart from neighboring cities. It highlights what's unique about Forest Grove, our values, our history, our vision for the future. It also ensures that every, everything we communicate, whether it's on social media, at an event, or in a city publication, speaks in a consistent and recognizable voice. So. Or did I miss one? The community's thoughts, feelings, and ideas gathered during the 2040 outreach are not currently reflected in Forest Grove's brand. At present, we have a logo more than a true brand identity. A new communications plan and branding guide will work together to establish a cohesive Forest Grove brand and ensure the city's programs, goals, and achievements, again, especially those outlined in the 2040 plan, are communicated effectively. And here's some logo examples. You'll notice Hillsborough has a good selection of logo variations and lockups. Then, of course, you know, Tiger Bend, Ashland, I'm sure everybody has seen these. So this is a brand at work. And before we look at the following example, full disclosure, I did not work for the city of Royal Oak when I lived in Michigan, nor am I familiar with the company that created its brand. I'm sharing this example because it's a strong illustration of how a city brand can be consistently and effectively applied across an entire organization and its departments. Royal Oak adopted this brand in 2013, and after more than a decade, it still feels fresh and contemporary. You might be wondering why I'm highlighting a city in the Midwest. After research, after researching, I wasn't able to find a similarly strong, well-executed city brand currently in use in our region. This gives Forest Grove a unique opportunity to become a possible model for successful municipal branding. This is just more of the wayfinding and place-making, which is mentioned a few times throughout the 2040 plan. And in these examples, I believe it is applied in a smart, resident- and visitor-friendly way. And again, we see the brand applied to a gateway sign and park signs. I'd like to point out that park signs are tall, so people walking or driving to a specific park can see the marker from a distance. The communications plan brings all departments under one policy to ensure clear, consistent messaging across the city. The branding guide provides direction for using the city's visual identity. Parks and Recreation and the library will have approved variations to reflect their unique audiences while staying connected to the overall brand. Utilities and Public Safety Departments, which is light and power, police and fire, will maintain separate branding. This follows best practices as these areas have strong professional identities and recruitment needs that differ from general civic messaging. So staff anticipates one, this being a one-year process, beginning in November 2025. I realize that begins on Saturday. And concluding in November 2026, I do have a timeline on the next slide. The RFP will likely include development of a communications plan, logo design and variations, a branding guide covering typefaces, colors, and usage standards, a business suite with items like business cards and letterhead, creation of official city seal. To support the creative process, the 2040 outreach data will be available as a resource. And we could also say that the community survey feedback could too. Input may, input may be gathered through an ad hoc committee made up of board and commission members before adoption. Staff will hold a work session with city council to review the materials. Once adopted, a rollout calendar will guide implementation across all departments. And this is the timeline. Again, it, you know, this is what we're estimating, so this could change, but I will try my best to stick to it. I'll begin writing the RFP in November. It's best to post after the holidays to increase response rate, so that'll get posted in January. We'll review the proposals February through March. After company selection, we can begin working on the communications plan and branding guide. When everything is finished, we'll present the new brand to council and solicit feedback. And from there, we can move to adoption. Jesse will discuss the funding aspect in more detail, but first, I'd like to explain how we arrived at these numbers. I contacted three companies to obtain quotes. I explained what we'd like to do, what we're trying to accomplish, and of course, included the listed items. Like a communication, like we're in need of a communications plan, brand development, including different variations for library and parks and rec, brand development testing, that's with the ad hoc committee, and then a brand style guide.
Thank you, Stephanie, mayor, members of the council. With regard to funding, we have identified some funding in the current budget. It was former economic development monies that were associated with an enterprise zone that came back to the city. They are eligible for this purpose. There's, they are only eligible for projects that are of an economic development nature, a communications plan, and a branding guide, or of an economic development nature. It's 62,000, I think it's $62,900. Not to say that it's going to cost that much, but that's how much eligibility of funding exists in the budget now.
And with that, any questions?
Okay, any questions for Stephanie? Counselor Faulkner. You're, you have to turn it on, I think.
Now it's on. Could we go back to the slide that has our current logos on it? Does the, do you think the RFP, are we, is the suggestion that we, that there will be time and money spent on revamping these? Or could we maybe provide some feedback that maybe more time on the, on the real recipe stuff and maybe a little bit less time on the logo? How, how long ago were these done?
So the tourism one was completed, or I believe officially adopted, 21. That one's still relatively new. I am not sure about our three leaves. Or I have a date for the communication strategy, but that is escaping me right now. Not sure. Maybe 2014?
Well, how long have you been here? I feel like it happened the first year you were here. You said, hey, there's not a, like, an adopted logo. So 10 years.
Okay, so the three leaves, maybe 10, the tree is maybe five.
I think the Three Leaves has been here longer. I don't think that it was kind of formalized until approximately 10 years ago, but it was here prior to that. I don't know that we were recommending changing the tourism logo. I think we were looking at just the city brand, not to confuse it with the tourism brand.
And how old, you said that that RO, the one that you, that was pretty successful.
That was from 2013, officially adopted.
And it's still in use?
Correct.
So 12 years.
12 years.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't see why they would be changing it anytime soon. Those things are usually here to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, I think if I'm understanding Counselor Faulkner correctly, it's a question, would we send this current logo with the RFP saying like, hey, we have this?
It would be mentioned in the RFP if somebody asked to see it previously, then all, everybody who's submitting it, it's just, I don't see why, why we couldn't include it in.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where my, my question really lies is in a concern that there would be a lot of money spent on redeveloping a logo. That's probably okay, and not more time spent on what I think would be strategically more valuable to staff, which is, you know, sort of the, the work product about, you know, the communications plan and strat, and how to implement, you know, and.
I think the time between the two is even. And I think having a good visual identity, if you have a strong one, then that makes your communications plan even better. But if you're using something like this, that, I'm not going to lie, is very hard to put on anything. If you have something like this, it doesn't, it doesn't help the communications plan as much as something newer, fresher, more contemporary would, if that makes sense.
Sure.
I don't know if you need to, but do you think you need to? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Guffston.
I think also, and I'm not positive on this, that it's best practice to change your logo. I'm not sure how often they recommend, just because it does keep it fresh and it brings new attention to it.
Maybe for private companies, but municipalities operate a little differently because we are funded, or how we are funded, rather, as opposed to private business. Because like Adidas, I think in like the last maybe 15 years, they've had three revamps. And they can do that, but I don't know, I don't know if it's good for municipality to do it as.
I'm real excited about this. I think it's the foundation of kind of implementing our 2040 plan is really like shoring some of these things up. And, I mean, just a brief little history, but, you know, our, like, efforts towards better community engagement and communication, I think, are, it's pretty young. I think five years ago, we hired our first communication staff person within City Hall. And I would like to say the communications team, Stephanie and Joyce have done a tremendous job, and we're seeing the effects, right? More people showed up to the state of the city. We had our first CIVICS Academy. And I think our communication plan, like, needs to catch up with that. And, you know, because we just, and so I'm really excited. I think that this is something that will help us implement that 2040 plan and is the foundation to do all the action items within it. So that's how, I feel pretty confident and excited about this. Any other, so what do you need from us to move, or from this meeting?
I think we were just looking for a general consensus to move forward with an RFP that has both the kind of scope and process that Stephanie has generally outlined. To kind of address your concern, Counselor Faulkner, we can also put things in an RFP that ask certain questions. And so I think we can get a variation of proposals back.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Are we good? Is there consensus to move forward with this? Okay, cool. So I'm going to, right on time, I'm going to adjourn this work session, but we're going to start our meeting five minutes late. We're going to. Good evening. Oh, wait for a minute. Good, good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council at 7:06 PM on October 27th. Will our city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes, here.
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Here.
Counselor Schimmel?
Here.
Counselor Falconer?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel? Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tuvalu and Kalapua's who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and the council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and to the soul of the liberty and justice of this world.
Thank you. Okay, item B on the agenda is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature to be called on. Our first person signed up for public comment is Dale Feek. Good evening, Mr. Feek.
Good evening. Mayor Counselor, President Mariana Venezuela?
Valenzuela.
And, no. I emailed you, but it's in your packet, so, and I don't have something to hand to you, but I am encourage you to open your packet and to listen to what's there. Timothy Snyder, who you know, read the book on tyranny, 20 lessons for the 20th century, also wrote the book on freedom. And he, I attended the Forest Grove, Hillsborough and Beaverton No Kings rallies. They were great, but Timothy Snyder attended the rally in Cincinnati, Ohio, and he introduced that rally and gave a seven-minute and 30-minute speech. What I've given you in your packet is the link to that speech, seven minutes and 30 seconds. It's a good summary of all those rallies and what's happened in the United States. I really encourage you to open that and listen just for seven minutes and 30 seconds. I made a transcript of that. I included in the attachment. Also made a transcript of, the article was in the Sunday paper called Timothy Snyder, what the lessons of his new book mean to Portland and County of Washington, Washington County. He is important to understand really what's going on in the big picture and the little picture in our county. So I made a document of that that's also in your pack. I'd encourage you to like take a look at that. He is speaking, Timothy Snyder, speaking tomorrow night at the Snitz. My wife and I are going. And we're looking forward to having him sign one of my books, but also to learn how he's gonna inform us of how we can be better citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next public comment is Silas, is it Rulis? Rulis, oh, come on up. Please have a seat right in front of me and then state your name for the record and then you can go ahead after that.
Yeah, I'm Silas Rulis and good evening, Mayor Wenzel, city council members and Forest Grove community members. My name is Silas and I am an athlete. I play soccer, baseball, basketball and swim with the Forest Grove Swim Club drag. The youth sports team in Forest Grove has changed my life for the better. I've heard that Parks and Recreation Department wants to charge nonprofit youth sports organizations more, which would most likely increase registration fees. I wanted to show the city council how many athletes a change like this could impact. I created this petition. I went to practices and games of lots of different sports to gather signatures of youth athletes. This is only a fraction of the number of kids this change would affect. I collected 139 signatures of athletes who want to continue being part of youth sports community. Here's our statement. We the undersigned are youth athletes representing many of Forest Grove's sports programs, baseball, soccer, swim club, water flow across the moor. Participating in these teams has shaped who we are. We've made friends, built confidence, developed leadership skills and learned the value of teamwork and commitment. If these rental fees go into effect, it will likely mean higher participation costs for these families, especially those with more than one athlete or who are already stretched financially. These aren't private club teams. These are nonprofit youth sports programs that were started by the Forest Grove community members, meant to be affordable and accessible to all. Raising field and pool rental rates puts up a barrier. It risks excluding kids who would benefit from, from staying active and involved in positive structured community programs. That's not just bad for individual families, it's bad for the future of Forest Grove. We ask you to reconsider protect access to youth sports, keep our programs affordable and let the values of inclusion, community and opportunity remain at the hearts of Parks and Rec. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Silas. Silas, do you mind giving your petition and statement to the city recorder for public record? She's sitting over. Thank you so much. There's no one else signed up for public comment? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give public comment? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give public comment? Seeing none. There, there's no items on our consent agenda, so we're gonna move to item D. Any additions or deletions, city manager?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
Any proposed by council? Hearing none. We're gonna move on to item E, which is presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Real excited about our first presentation is gonna be our civics academy recognition. So I'm gonna ask Stephanie and Joyce, and I think I'll come down as well, and we'll see how we're gonna do this. Okay. Before we begin, this is our very first civics academy that I know of in Forest Grove. And I just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who participated. And I really deeply like, I'm so grateful to Stephanie and Joyce, our communication team, who put this together, worked with other department directors, worked with City Hall, worked with community members, brought this vision to life. And so I just wanna say thank you to everybody. So are we gonna call, how do we wanna do it? I think I'm gonna call you up one at a time, and then if we could stand maybe in the middle and we'll get a class photo. My other job's a teacher, so I wanna kinda have like a graduating, the first graduating class of the Forest Grove Civics Academy. Okay. Okay. John Beachwood. Yeah, let's give him a little round of applause. Catherine Dyshart. Nicole Ellis. Did you miss it? Andrew, is it Feifield? Feifield, we got it. And Arlene, I don't wanna mess up. Kelbilingo. Kelbilingo. Very well. Debbie Heisler. Uh, Kush, is it Kushi Kalia? And Amy Lawler. And Dave Miller. Evelyn Orr. And is it Sarri, no, Sarai Rivera? Angelica Rodriguez. Is there anyone else that was a part of the civics academy that I forgot to include? Maybe came in late? Okay, so let's have one more round of applause and then if we could get in a little closer for our. Come over here, Evelyn, to use the mic, so it's on TV. Okay.
So the class wanted to give you, give you something in appreciation for all the work you've put into this. It was, we know how much time you've spent, after hours, after class, and we have some cards and there's even a little poem too, but you can't read it here because it's kinda funny. But anyway. Stephanie? Here, four, where to go? There you go, one for you. And I bragged about this class to the Chamber of Commerce and the board, and since I'm board chair, I got to do some certificates for you for completion. So this is for you, Joyce, and for you.
Thank you. You guys are so sweet. Thank you so much.
This is fantastic.
This really is.
Thank you. Made it all worthwhile.
I'm gonna wait a minute. If any of the civic academy participants would like to leave, we'll just wait a minute before our next, don't feel, I mean, I'm not gonna peer pressure you to stay for the whole council meeting. You can, you're free to leave whenever you'd like. Okay, our next presentation for the evening is our Forest Grove Watershed Annual Report. And we have Barry Sims, our trout mountain forestry partner and forester, and then Gregory Robertson, our public works director. Good luck following that, gentlemen. Everyone has a tough job here.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. With me is Barry Sims. He is our contract forester and works with me to manage our watershed. And we are doing just a brief presentation to you on this past year's activities and a briefing of next year's work.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor Wenzel, councilors, nice to be here. So go ahead to the first slide. I'll just give a quick overview of what we'll talk about, why are we here? Just giving our annual report, kind of an update on our stewardship plan, which has been in place now for about 20 years. We'll do a quick review of the things we worked on this past year, 2025, talk about the next couple of years, some ideas we've got lined up. I'll briefly kinda go over our forest stewardship council certification, which we've been participating in for a long time, and then hopefully save a few minutes for questions and comment. So yeah, just a quick, quick overview. I will mention that Greg's department did a great job of putting on a tour this, earlier this month that was well-attended, and it was not nearly as sunny as that beautiful shot that was from a couple of years ago. But it's really nice to get some members of the community, including some neighbors of the watershed, out, see what we're up to. Next slide. Just a quick context, the watershed is about 4,225 acres, one large block, and it mostly surrounds Clear Creek, which is the main source of water for the, for the city system. Clear Creek is a tributary to Gales Creek, and it's just about eight miles from the city. The stewardship plan is really focused on preserving water quality. So the first step in that plan was to designate the areas upstream of the water intakes and the steeper slopes within the watershed as reserves that aren't really subject to forest management. And that's been pretty consistent over the, over the last 20 years. The, the remaining two-thirds is subject to some form of forest management. We've typically been doing some kind of harvest every, every year, usually in the summertime. The plan established a limit on how much to be harvested so that it could stay sustainable over time. And the plan also really prescribes the type of forestry that can be done in the watershed so that it reduces the risk of. that can be done in the watershed so that it reduces the risk of any issues, any conflicts with the water quality. So that includes limiting the size of any openings, prescribing lots of retention. In, in other words, trees that don't get cut within a, within a harvest area and very limited use of herbicides. It's just for treating invasive weeds basically along the road sides. And every year we do some road and culvert monitoring and maintenance just to keep the road system in, in good shape. And I'm happy to report, as you all know, there weren't any wildfires in the, in the watershed this year. We had a couple of lightning strikes last year. But the weather this year was more favorable, so. Next slide. We've been focusing on thinning and really trying to thin the denser stands, especially younger trees that are potentially producing a fuel load that could become an issue if we did have a wildfire. That's just an example of, of one of the stands before thinning. And then the next slide is kind of an older stand after thinning, just giving the trees a little more room to, to maintain healthy crowns. Slide. This map shows the location of our projects in 2025. And the dark kind of purplish area is the main kind of reserve area around Clear Creek. So that's all not managed for, for timber. The green areas are the areas that we thin this year. And we were able to get 110 acres then, which was, I was really happy that we were able to get that much done. We had actually two logging contractors working together. So that helped get a lot done. We did do eight acres of small patch cuts and the nine acres in kind of a variable retention, which is going to be all natural regeneration with Douglas fir. Looks, actually looks pretty cool. We're in our target zone between 1.7 and 2 million board feet. And the net at the city was a little over $900,000 this year. Just showing kind of where we are in the, in the 10-year average. Kind of staying right in that, in that zone. Our, we're averaging 1.8, which is what we, you know, planned for. Next slide. So going forward, we're going to try and stay focused on areas that have never been thinned. So getting around to some of the areas that are a little harder to get to in the watershed, a combination of thinning and patch cuts, similar volume. And we're still working out exactly which areas. I'll show a map here. Next slide. So this is the whole watershed and it shows the reserve area in the north. And then the other riparian reserves along Roaring Creek. And then the activities from 2025, kind of along the western boundary. And then the 2026 and 27, we're looking to do work in the ridges up above Roaring Creek. That's kind of the plan there. We're going to be starting in on our, updating the timber inventory this winter. We need to wait for the leaves to come off so we can actually see, see what's out there. So we'll be reporting on that, progress on that next year. And we are, as I mentioned, part of a Forest Stewardship Council certification. And we had our certification audit earlier this month. They usually visit Forest Grove Watershed every other year. So this year was a site visit with the auditors and things went well. We, we didn't have any, any issues. But that audit report is, is certainly available to anyone that's interested. If you'd like to see that. That's just kind of a quick, kind of high level summary. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
Thank you and well done.
Yeah, you know, since we do still have quite a few more people than we normally have in the audience, those members who just participated in the Civics Academy, taking the tour of the watershed is one of the best things you can do in Forest Grove. It's usually in the fall. And, you know, I'm very grateful for the people who came before me, who made the decision to buy the watershed. We have some of the best water, some of the nicest places. You know, and Barry, you've just done a great job managing it for years and years and years. So thank you very much. But yeah, look out, like I think in August on the city website, they'll say, hey, we're going to have our watershed tour. Sign up for it. You can stop at the Gales Creek Tavern on the way back and get, you know, some food and hang out. It's a, it's a great, it's a great day. Okay, sorry. A little plug for Gales Creek. Any other comment? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, gentlemen. How can I say? Okay, our last presentation for the evening is from Clean Water Services. It's their annual update. And Rick Shanley, who I'm just going to meet for the first time, and Joe Gull. Hello, gentlemen. How's it going?
Mayor and council, my name is Joe Gull. I'm the Chief Utility Relations Officer. I've met most of you. I'm the person, you get a monthly newsletter with information every month. Hopefully you get a chance to read that and, and it's informative. Rick Shanley is here. He's going to introduce himself. And I also want to acknowledge that our board director, Jerry Willey, is also here if you have any questions from a board perspective. And thank you for coming, Director Willey. So we are starting, you're the first city we're doing this with. Someone may be starting with the best, right?
Right, I was going to say.
But before I get into some information that I wanted to share with you, I wanted to provide an opportunity for Rick to talk a little bit about himself and introduce himself in his new role. He's the interim CEO GM for Clean Water Services. And you can see the information on the slide. But Rick, I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to introduce yourself.
Thanks, Joe.
Look at a second.
Thank you. Well, it's great to be here. I've been the, well, I've been acting and now interim CEO for about five months. It's been a journey and it's been a great journey, honestly. I've gotten excellent support from Joe Gull and our board as well. So my prior position at Clean Water, I was the Chief Engineer and Water Technology Officer. So I had, you know, probably more than half of the staff, between all the engineers and the planners and construction group, as well as the operation and maintenance folks. So for me, taking this role has been a great opportunity to kind of make some changes. I've been supported and having the ability to make some good changes internally has been great. But this is new for me. I've, I've been safely tucked away, you know, working and, and less in an external focus. And honestly, it's been a real highlight for me at this point in my career. And starting with Forest Grove feels really good. I've done lots of projects here over my tenure with Clean Water. You've always been a wonderful partner. I know we've chased and gotten some grant money together to do work in the conveyance system. So I will spare you going through all the bullets and the different things that I've been doing. But I'm happy to be here, introduce myself. And I'll, I'll pass it along so we make sure we have time for questions if you, if you do have any.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Rick. And he's here for any of those technical questions that you might ask that I won't be able to answer. So I wanted just briefly, mainly for your audience that may be watching, just a quick reminder on some key components because sometimes people don't know who Clean Water Services is. We are a wastewater and stormwater government utility, serving more than 600,000 residents in urban Washington County. We have 12 partner cities. You are one of those partner cities. And of course, lots of unincorporated urban Washington County where we provide services. Our budget, just to give you an idea, this current year, $752 million. We are a unique organization in that we hold a watershed-based permit. That's very unique in the United States. We were the first in the United States to have a permit over the entire watershed. We work closely with Washington County, but we are a separate county special district. So we're separately managed in finances. The only thing is that the county board of commissioners takes their county board hat off and they are our board of directors, probably very similar to you as an urban renewal agency possibly. We do also have an advisory committee. We've had advisory committee going back to our days when we were the Unified Sewer Agency. You may recall that if you've been here a while. That's a committee that has various stakeholders that meets usually once every two months. There are folks that represent the districts for our district board members and then certain sectors. So there's an environment, there are two environmental stakeholders. There's a business, two business stakeholders. There's the ag community that's represented on that committee. And then the developer builders. So those are the folks that our work touches and those are advisors for us in the work we do. And we have about 468 FTEs currently as an organization. Next slide. We have four water resource recovery facilities. Another aspect that's unique to Forest Grove. You're one of the cities that we have a facility, an important facility, that we're making more investment in, which I will touch on. Those are some of the priorities in terms of the business climate that we're operating in, very similar to you as a city. You'll see things on there in terms of inflation, electrical costs, water utility rate increases. Everything construction related, it continues to go up. So we're affected by those. Next slide. This is a map that shows the watershed, the Tooulton River watershed, which is in the yellow area, kind of roughly approximate to the county. And then the gray is our service district. We provide regional services to our seven large cities. So you're in that category. You provide the local services and I will touch on that in a second. In our smaller cities and in the urban unincorporated areas, the CWS or Clean Water Services provides both regional and local services. For example, the city of Banks doesn't have necessarily the resources to do the local services that we provide. So we provide that for the smaller cities. And then we also work with very key industrial customers that may have unique things that they're putting into the waste stream. So they have permits from us. On the back of the document that I shared, you actually have a list of the companies that hold separate industrial permits from CWS that we work with. And you have a, a large amount compared to most of our cities. Not as big as Hillsborough, but I would say certainly one of the second largest in terms of industrial permities. So I mentioned, we talk regional and local, regional services. And this is strictly on the wastewater side of our work, is all the big pipes, all the major pipes to transmission lines over 24 inches and larger. We construct and maintain the treatment facilities, the pump stations and the high pressure lines. We do all of the reporting and oversight for the NPDES permit, which I'll touch on, our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. That's really critical to the work we do. We take care of all that. But you as a city, actually, the work that you do goes into that report, into that permit. Again, this document that I shared kind of breaks down some stats that you can look at, at your leisure in terms of what the city of Forest Grove does to comply with that permit. On the green side, the local services, that's what your team does, basically. So the smaller pipes, the 21 inches and smaller, street sweeping, cleaning catch basins, other kind of things. So the title of this presentation is, you know, state of our partnership. And the key here is we do this work together. It's not like CWS does it all or Forest Grove does it alone. We do it in partnership in many ways. And a term that we use is co-implement the permit. We do that together as well. So it really is a team effort. Next slide. So I was the city manager of Sherwood before I joined CWS about four and a half years ago. And as the city manager, I thought I knew what Clean Water Services did. The reality is now that I'm there, I really have learned a lot. And one of the things I tell my city partners when I meet with them is how important this permit is. So this five-year permit that we get from DEQ, which is a federal permit, really drives everything that we do. It's always like, how does this relate to the permit? And a lot of reporting that has to go to DEQ and ultimately EPA. I didn't know that when I was at the city of Sherwood. And it really is really important for you to understand the permit. It's a five-year permit. I'm not going to go through all these bullets, but you can get a sense of all the things that we are allowed to do because of that permit. Next slide. It is a five-year permit. So you can see we're in the 2023 to 2027 time period. We're getting close to the end of this five-year permit cycle. We're getting ready to apply for the next permit. It's on the horizon. It's due on June 3, 2027. And for planning purposes, we are not only looking at the next permit cycle, but the permit cycle after that. Because we really want to get ahead of things that may be happening. You may have heard about PFAS and other things. Well, we're trying to get ahead of that. So we're not surprised when regulations come down from DC or at the state level. So we're, we're a little over halfway through this permit cycle. Next, please. I wanted to give you a sense, last fiscal year, some projects that we were working on here in Forest Grove. Those are fiscal year '25 costs. Most of those projects are multiple year projects. The two at the top are pretty significant. You may have heard the Ripple project. Ripple stands for Research Innovation Partners Lab. That's our new lab. So the former TTM building over by our treatment facility, we bought that building a number of years ago. We're now renovating and expanding that building. We will have a state-of-the-art lab in that facility that will open probably at the end of 2026 or early '27. So our current lab, which is in Hillsborough and Jackson Bottom, will be relocating out to Forest Grove. We're very excited about that project. The second, the Forest Grove wastewater, where's it? What is WORF? Wastewater?
Resource Recovery.
Yes, I know. Still learning the jargon.
It's the column wastewater treatment.
I know. It sounded so simple then. But that project, that $19 million is largely a new clarifier that we are constructing at the Forest Grove facility. That's the other surprise when I came from the city of Sherwood. A lot of these investments that we are making at the treatment facilities are significant. They're not inexpensive projects. A clarifier could be $20, $25 million. A lot of concrete and material that go into that. Some of the other projects we spent money on this past year as well. Next slide. We are also wrapping up what is called our West Basin Master Plan. So our board will be considering this, I think, next month. It's been about a two-year project. That is really a plan for our regional wastewater system. You are in the green, you're in a west, in the West Basin. The West Basin is a little unique in that we have three treatment facilities that we can actually, correct me if I'm wrong here, from a technical standpoint, transfer wastewater from the three facilities as needed because of some major pipes. It's a little bit more complicated, but it also allows us more flexibility compared to the East Basin where everything goes to Durham. When we developed this West Basin Master Plan, we're really looking and talking to our city partners and say, what is your plan for the next 20 years? Because we want to be there with our infrastructure to meet your community goals and aspirations. So if you want a large industrial area to develop, we need to be prepared for that in terms of our planning and what we do. And that's what this master plan, it was completed in close coordination with your team, your planners and your engineers and public works. Wanted to give you a glimpse also in the next five years of the investment we're going to make just in the Forest Grove area. So this is about $105 million estimated over the next five-year period. You can see Ripple will be completed. We have another $44.8 million in this fiscal year to go to that project. We have almost $40 million in upgrades to the treatment facility. The inflow and infiltration abatement project, that was the $1 million, $1.5 million federal grant to upgrade some old infrastructure in your center of your town. A variety of other projects. The last project, the new Council Creek pump station, is primarily there to serve the West Forest Grove area and your aspirations to develop that. That pump station may not be in Forest Grove. It could be in Cornelius or another location, but it's certainly going to serve Forest Grove. So I wanted you to be aware of that investment. Switching Gear is another new project that we're going to be kicking off in the near future. We're going to take a deep dive into how we bill. So I don't know if you know the lay of the land in terms of CWS billing, but with Forest Grove, you do the bill on our behalf. So your residents, your businesses do not get a CWS bill. They get a utility bill from the city of Forest Grove. And a portion of that bill gets remitted to regional services, comes to Clean Water Services and you keep the local portion. We do that arrangement with our seven large, big cities. And then in other areas, we provide some billing or we co-bill with TVWD, Tooulton Valley Water District. So for a variety of reasons, it's been, 2008 was the last time we really took a hard look at how we bill. And it's time, it's overdue for us to take another look and really look at alternatives. Does this arrangement still make sense? Should we bill ourselves? What are the pros and cons of the different alternatives? What will it cost? What will it cost? If we were to take over billing for all of our customers, what would the investment be needed to make that happen? So we want to develop those alternatives over the coming year, work with you and our other cities to get input from you as well, to figure out what's the best path forward in terms of billing. This is just a rough schedule in terms of that feasibility study. We just had a board work session a few weeks ago, and they gave us the green light to move forward with this project. We will be hiring a consultant, because at the top is all of the finance team responsibilities over that year, just like your finance team has to develop a budget. For them to do a feasibility study on top of all their other work just didn't make sense, so we're going to bring in an outside consultant to kind of spearhead that, work with the finance team internally at CWS, but also with your folks to discuss that. We will hope to have a final report at the end of '26, and then, depending on which path we go, then we get into implementation. And as I said, if we took everything in-house, it would take some time to implement, we'd have to buy a new billing system, we'd have to figure out how to get all the customer information from our seven big cities into our system, it wouldn't happen magically overnight, so if that's a path we pick, it'll take a little longer to implement. But I wanted you to be aware that we're going to be doing that over the coming six to 12 months. Couple other permit requirements that are due almost a year from now, on November 1, '26. We have design and construction standards, and the permit within it has some specific language around some stormwater sections that we need to open up and revise to meet the permit. Again, we will do that with coordination with the city of Forest Grove staff as well. And then last but not least, we have an operating IGA that basically governs how we work together. The permit required that all of our operating IGAs are updated, it didn't define what update meant, but most of these operating IGAs go back to 2008. So again, they're long overdue, we're slowly working through all of them, I anticipate we'll be working with Forest Grove staff late spring, early summer next year, and you'll see hopefully before November 1, '26, an item to approve a new operating IGA with Clean Water Services. And that will be a five-year IGA in terms of timeframe. We're currently working with Washington County and the city of Tuolton, those are the two, we can't tackle them all at once, but we kind of build on each other. Beaverton, Cornelius, and Hillsborough are all done. So. Last, I can't come to Forest Grove and not talk about Fern Hill, so Fern Hill, as you know, is an important component to our facility here, it's our natural treatment system, it's part of the treatment, it's very unique, but I think more for the city of Forest Grove is the fact that it's also a public space. And as you can see, 250,000 visitors a year come to Fern Hill. They're not coming necessarily to see our natural treatment system, they're coming to see the birds and other kind of things. And those are folks that come to your community, and then they go to restaurants, they come spend time in Forest Grove, so we're really proud of the partnership we have with Forest Grove at that facility. Most people that I talk to that go there don't really realize the, why it's there and the backstory, so to speak. You had some students from your sister city in Japan visit Fern Hill last week, I sent this over, I have a picture, they visited and really enjoyed visiting the facility and learning about the treatment system and what goes on there. And with that, I think that's all. I don't take any questions or comments or other things that...
Yeah, any questions, comments? Counselor Schimmel.
Well, first, Mr. Shandley, I applaud you entering into what I'm sure is a difficult circumstance, especially coming out of that engineering career, I can appreciate how that's challenging, where problems aren't solved with formulas. So, well done. I was curious, in terms of your lab, is there thoughts about using that as an instrument for workforce development, either through a state or local school or district, or a new business incubator, through a chamber, or is that just not what it's to be designed for?
I think that we're always open to opportunities, and there are spaces, you know, available, the building is sized such that it could support some of those things. At this point in time, I put those probably more in the aspirational category, we had some early-on discussions with Pacific University and those things. So as we incrementally move forward, getting that compliance lab up and running is key and foremost on our minds, but it's a great, going to be a great facility, we're really excited, it's a big investment, and we want to leverage that investment to the maximum extent possible. So we're certainly open to those ideas and taking full advantage of the structure and infrastructure that is there.
One more. Are there particular city plans that should intercept with your West Basin Master Plan? I hear about the collaboration, and we're in the process of updating various plans, are there particular plans, as you might know as a city manager, that need to intercept with that?
So I think that communication on an ongoing basis between city staff and CWS staff is essential. One of the things with this plan is not a plan that goes on the shelf and then we dust it off in 15, 20 years, it gets looked at every year and adjusted every year, so as the economy changes and things change in terms of priorities, we can look at it with fresh eyes. I think industrial development and economic development is the type of work that could shift what we do more than residential development. Residential development's a little bit less impact on the system, so it's that constant communication that needs to happen between the city and CWS in terms of planning and making adjustments as needed.
Any other questions, comments? I don't see any.
No, I just want to mention, if I may, a few years ago, I was supervising a group of kids from Centro Cultural, the climate justice leadership program, and we had a couple of times, two different groups, they visited the facility to actually learn what it was all about. And I think it was a very enriching, positive experience, and those are things that I think we would really like to see, you know, working with Pacific internships, that sort of work would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
It's nice seeing you, it's nice to meeting you.
Thanks.
In a rare, rare thing, we have no public hearings, ordinances, or resolutions, so I'm going to skip to item G on the agenda, which is council communication, and we're just going to go in order of the agenda, so we'll start with Council President Valenzuela.
Yes, so I have nothing to report, the PAB meeting was canceled last week, and I do want to mention though, please remember November 9, Sunday, the invitation to the library, to the gathering of the groups at 3:00 PM. I know it's Sunday, I know it's difficult, but if you're able to make it, I would appreciate it so much if you can join us on that day.
And thank you, Council President. Counselor Belkner.
I just have one thing from JWC BR, JOC, so apparently PGE was billing JWC for a reservoir that is not part of JWC, and so there's, I think, $22,800 and some odd change that will be reimbursed to the city of Forest Grove. They caught the mistake, apparently it was ongoing for quite some time, but they've changed how they'll be billing in the future so that that won't continue to happen, but that's it.
So where does that money go, if that happened? Just back in...
If it's from JWC, the water fund.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm going to pay attention and stop thinking. Counselor Gftussen.
Okay, the PAC meeting, they talked about the downtown art installations and the TLT funds for 2026 and 2027, so they're eager to find out more about that. They did talk about, within that discussion, rotating galleries and setting up a subcommittee and to talk about what that might look like and how that might be rotating art as opposed to permanent art. So no decisions were made. They talked about murals again, I think we talk about murals each time, this time was using the Frye Building as a possible option for mural. And they talked about the Community Open House, which is October 28, so they were really excited about that, and so am I. Other than that, I did want to talk about some clarification, I know a couple things. Number one, the Downtown Association now has a new website, it's been in the works for months, so that's been launched, and so you guys are welcome to look at it. There also was some clarification done with the Oregon Main Street Coordinator, Sherry, because it dawned on us that she may not have ever seen the Conflict of Interest and Confidentiality document. So over a series of emails, she read that document and kind of explained where she thinks the confusion happened with a comment about calling it an NDA versus Conflict of Interest and Confidentiality document. So throughout those conversations, it comes that the confidentiality and conflict of interest document is almost exactly what they recommend. So I do have the documentation, we want to put it on record, but our policy for the city club, they have like the same policy as Climate Falls, who got their policy from the template from the Main Street program, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew this is a standard document, and this hasn't been, we haven't talked about it to the chamber yet because we just found this out. So feel free to ask me for the documentation, the emails clarifying the template and the city club's policy.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. And Counselor Marshall.
I am trying to find one, because my son seems to have deleted them. I know that we had a forestry meeting, they were looking to update the urban canopy mapping of it, and they were looking to do, register more trees on the historical tree, because a lot of them have been coming down. They did have ODF part of that to work with, look into possible grants next year when grants are open again. As far as parks and rec, I cannot find that information, so if I can find that, I will let you know in just a minute.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Martinez.
So when, was it, so last week I went to the Hillsborough Prep Breakfast, it was early in the morning, I was told, I hadn't attended before, I was told that it was very well-attended this last year, or this year. Our new Zen delegation was here, they came in Wednesday evening, we did several activities Thursday, we went to Chaucer Foods, where they do freeze-dried foods, so we were able to see the process for all of that. David Hill Winery, Saki One, and Fern Hill, and then we had the dinner Thursday night, which food was provided by primetime. And then entertainment, it was a good evening, the Japanese, the kids did a dance with a video from their home. And then on Friday, we went to the Safety Center in Hillsborough, where the police do their training. The police department here in Forest Grove and the fire department as well, so we got tours of both those places, which is great for the kids, because they don't get to see those facilities in their own country. And then they were, they left yesterday morning.
Can I make a clarifying comment or question?
Yeah.
The students from the trip, there's 10 students and four adults, on Thursday, the students attended school, and they attended middle school with, like, my leadership group, they did not go to Saki One or David Hill Winery.
I apologize, yes, that's a good clarification.
I just want to make sure.
We took the adults to those outings on Thursday. No.
Okay, I just want to clarify for the record.
Oh, good, good catch.
All good. Thank you, Counselor Martinez.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Counselor Schimmel.
On CCE, Community Open Houses tomorrow night, starting at 5:30, so welcome the public to participate. Let's see, the CCE has done a great job of really transforming the way we communicate, transforming that, what was the, what, the Town Hall meeting to an open house, so I'm looking forward to that. On the TV Highway Transit and Safety Project, they're moving forward with a more detailed design, and they're putting together a committee advisory committee of folks from the community, so that's been shared on social media, it's been shared directly with our Civics Academy graduates, TRIMED and Grove Link will be at our Community Open House tomorrow night to also share about it, so really want to encourage folks to take a look at that, but at least participate in the survey that's been circulating regarding Grove Link and other links around the surrounding areas, so, you know, they're looking through some possible cuts, and so we'd need to make sure that our folks are contributing to that survey and participating where possible. And I also want to, if I may, Mayor, follow up on a correspondence regarding acknowledgement and reformation of our council authority. There's some correspondence stemming from August 25 work session that, from my personal point of view, appeared to disempower our city manager and subordinate our authority as a council. There is, this started with a correspondence we received from Brian Poole regarding Miles' correction to a misstatement by Miles, and then in asking for the original email, there was just some alarm there and what I read, and so if there's time, I'll read just my note and just ask that council to read through the correspondences that preceded that. So what I said in my comment was, to ensure shared understanding and consistent application of city policy, I recommend the full council acknowledge for public record, the email correspondence that I referred to, and consider the following at tonight's meeting. The first, to affirm council and city manager authority under the city charter, Sections 5, or Chapter 5, Section 19, and Chapter 8, Section 33, and then council rules, Section 18.1B and C. The second was to affirm council consensus from our August 25 email, that was a typo, it should have been the 25th work session, regarding council goals, where we were to clarify our strategic direction for downtown redevelopment and partnerships. And then the third thing was to confirm the city club's confidentiality agreement is not enforced in terms of, with respect to the city, and just referring to Brian Poole's email that stating that the city is not bound by the agreement, nor will anyone from the city sign one in the future. And the rationale from those suggestions is, as a duly sworn counselors, we recognize that only the city manager is authorized to execute an interagency agreement consistent with our direction and consensus of council. What I thought was a litigious response regarding an inconsequential miss, something misspoken would understandably cause a disruption of work and personal anxiety, not just for the person impugned, but other city staff that are either presenting to council, engaged with counselors individually on matters involving their external interests. The other thing was overreaching control, whether through the city manager or staff, and create the appearance of undue influence and may be perceived as undermining council authority, particularly when it appears to advance the interests of an external agency on a matter that the council has already addressed. Such actions risk creating confusion among staff and weakening established policy. So to maintain clarity, restore public trust, and support staff confidence, I want to... uh, I want to ask to commit to resolving inquiries uh, regarding council decisions here at the Thays. Uh, so again, the, the first thing was, oh, it, and this is, we're trained in this, so it, it should be just a simple acknowledgement that, you know, we affirm our authority and the city manager's authority under the, under the uh, the city charter and council rules. And that people understand that only the city manager has the authority to sign an interagency agreement.
So, can you help me understand? What are you asking for from the council as a body right now?
Well, number one, I'm, I'm just actually asking for acknowledgement that we understand our authority and the authority of the city manager, because I thought, um, what I'm claiming is that it gave, that correspondence gave the appearance of undue influence. So I'm just stating publicly that that's, that's our obligation is to the, the, the discretion of the coun- of the consensus of the council uh, as give, as directed by the charter and the, the council rules. And that the city manager has jurisdiction over his staff. And only he has the authority to sign interagency agreement. That's, that's the first.
Okay. And what process would we have to follow to do that?
No, there's no process. I'm just, I just, that's a, it's a.
I feel like, and I'm not trying to, I feel like that's the, the charter outlines those roles and responsibilities. I think it's in the charter. And I guess I'm not, and we can say yes, yes, but I feel, um, I, I don't, I don't see, well, I'm trying to figure out during council co- comments, like there's not really a discuss, there's nothing on the table to discuss. Or there's like no motion, there's nothing to move. Um, so, and they're like, what I'm hearing is like you're, and I, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you're stating that these are the things outlined in the charter of roles and responsibilities between counselors and staff. Right? That we all swore to uphold. Right? So we already, already, we already upswore to uphold those things.
We did.
Yeah, we did. We all have.
And I, I'm, I'm just saying that's, this is just like a reminder and that.
Okay, so you don't, you're just, these are your comments.
Let's commit to it.
You're asking us just like.
I think it's being compromised.
Okay.
So it's that, so and then, so then the second one is really a question of, and I don't know if it's uh, Mariah or Jesse affirming the consensus from our August 25th work session regarding poll 1.8.
And I, I'm going to ask and while they're thinking, I don't know if there's been a question, like we came to consensus and there hasn't been any buddy. I haven't heard anyone on this council ask to do anything different than what we came to consensus with on, on August 25th. So again, I'm like, why do, I don't underst- not like recon- like there hasn't been any difference in what we, the consensus on August 25th.
Yeah, so, so in, in what I would just describe, that there's correspondence and there's interaction with staff that are in contradiction to that consensus. And so I want to reaffirm that consensus decision.
Not, not by the body. There has not been a contradiction by the body. By the, by the body of the council.
There hasn't been any different direction.
There hasn't been any different direction by this council.
What do you mean, different direction?
The, the consensus we came to on August 25th is the same direction we're going right now.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking for uh, confirmation of what that consensus was so that we all hear it again. There was a consensus made in that meeting. There's, since then, there's a con- been, in my perception, a contradiction to that consensus. I'm wanting to restate what that consensus decision was so that we, we ensure we're.
I can say what my opinion is, but I think what we should wait and do is if you want a restatement, if what you're asking for is a restatement of the consensus, then I think the best approach to have the most accurate approach is for city staff to have the time to look at the video, to look at the minutes, and then come back at the next meeting and tell us what it is. Because I can tell you what I thought the consensus was. But I would probably wager to bet that maybe someone else has a maybe a different take on the consensus because it's going to be based on my memory from two months ago. So I think if you, if that's fine, if you want that, but I think that staff should bring, like really look at the record. Watch the video, look at the minutes and then tell us. Because at the, what I do think I do a good job of is at the very end of every work session saying, this is the consensus I'm hearing. Staff, do you need any more information? This is what we're doing. So I think that that should be an easy thing to find. I mean, if someone thinks I'm speaking.
That's right.
That is so, so alarming to me is that if it, if it was, there, there would, you, you seem confused about what I'm asking for. And it, it's a shock to me that, that, that i- i- am I the only one who's seeing contradiction to what we, what we talked about on the 25th of August?
No, no. I don't, I mean, maybe I'm answering. I haven't seen any contradiction from staff or council since August 25th about the consensus. And, and since we're going to push it, my understanding of the consensus was that there was concern about the NDA about the recommendations not being followed that the Main Street report gave. And so at this point forward, there was going to be no financial partnership to fund the, the city club with these things, with these, until these things were addressed. Or like at this moment, because these issues were not addressed, the council did not feel comfortable creating like a financial, having a fina- right?
Yeah, there has been no money spent.
And there has been no money spent.
There has been no money.
I, I didn't mention anything about money being spent. I'm talking about the behaviors by, by counselor or, or staff that has resulted, has since resulted in someone's record being impugned. And, and their overreaching our, our, our authority to direct the city manager to try to convince us of doing something different. I mean, you gotta, yeah, I mean, you gotta read the, 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 the August 25th memo. It's, yeah, I guess it's, it's a shock to me and, and what's alarming is that we're, we're creating liability for the city if this continues. So I would just think, I would just encourage everyone to read the correspondence. But there's, there's this so, risk and liability I see just being festered. Uh, and it's not just, that's, that to me was the last draw. It's, it's been going on for two years. And, and I, I don't know why I'm, I'm the only one who's, who's reading into this. It's like, when I talk to other agencies and business owners, it's, I mean, it's, we can't, I mean, we've lost the trust of our business community. We've lost this, you know, we're, you know, there's a skeptic, skeptical uh, partners be- because of this polarization that's been festering. And that, that correspondence was just the epitome of what, what we're going to struggle with.
What correspondence are you speaking about?
In my.
The one that you sent?
The one you sent?
Yeah.
The email.
Yeah, there's a correspondence from Council of System to, to Jesse. You know, a- ask, asking for that, something that I thought was unwarranted regarding a staff person. And then directing him essentially to reach something in contradiction with what we said at August 25th.
Well, can I, I'm just going to like state something. This is like a slippery slope and I don't know if we should, I'm going to try it really quick. But, you know, you, you're concerned about a counselor's conversation with the city manager. And it, it appears to me that you want like this body as a body to reaffirm something that counselors can't individually speak to the city manager. Unless it's like, but that's dangerous. That's a dangerous thing because do we all want every one-on-one conversation we have with Jesse to have to go through seven of us?
You, yeah.
Am I, am I?
Yeah, you totally missed it. The, if, if, when we make a decision, any, the conversation we should have with Jesse is consistent with what we decided on as a consent.
I agree.
I'm saying that's being violated, that, that the, the correspondence demonstrate the conversation in contradiction with their dis- so it, it sounds like the.
Can I push a little bit further? But do you think that staff then like went against the consensus of the council based on that one conversation or that one email? Like, we also can't hold staff accountable for one counselor writing something. I mean, I'm just like.
I'm going to suspend it. I, I don't, I don't know if, if you've read it. Yeah, it's.
I've read it. I mean, I'm looking at it again right now and I'm, I'm just.
Hillsor Guston wants to say.
Yeah. I, I just want to clarify, yes, this was an email that I sent to Jesse because um, a response about signing the confidentiality um, agreement was um, said in error, right? Miles said that he didn't sign it. He forgot that he signed it. It, it's fine, right? It, these things happen. And so I emailed Jesse to say, hey, this was, was said at a meeting. Here's the confidentiality document that was signed. Um, can you have this corrected formally so we know, okay, this was signed? Because that was a, a point that council was making that, that Miles didn't sign it. I didn't bring it to council because that's not necessary. I emailed Jesse to say, this happened. And Jesse wanted me, he thanked me and he said that they, they were going to do some things in the background. And then they would, you know, let everybody know once they got done doing whatever their internal stuff was, which I did not ask. So this wasn't me undermining anything. It was me requesting a correction, which any of us can request a correction when, when something is miss said.
I, I also just spoke in that meeting. I had no knowledge that there was a complication to the, to the state. And you corrected. You know, the, the, the dilemma is that this was five months after the deadline and as a partner, or as supposed partner, I had no knowledge of it. So there's, so the, the transparency is, is self is a problem. But as, as written here, I mean, the, the, I mean, a, a staff person's personal record was impugned as a result. I mean, that's why we got a, the email from Brian in October and not soon after your memo in August. And, you know, I got a different perspective on why you, why you sent the memo.
Mayor? Counselor Guston? Nobody can know what I was thinking except for me, but I can tell you what I was thinking. Something was said incorrectly by a staff member and I went to Jesse. He brought it to everybody's attention. What's in Miles' record? I have no idea. But Counselor Schimmel, you yourself mentioned that it would be nice if we had, you know, updates about issues that we're having with staff before an evaluation. So that we have a record of issues happening or congratulations happening for the staff. So this actually helps that because it was reported to Jesse and he went through the process appropriately. By no means did I, uh, was this a, a, an attempt to undermine or to penalize somebody. It was to clarify a record. And if there is a penalty in his eval- in his record, that is, that is not here. That is there. That is, that is Jesse's decision, Brian's decision on whether to penalize somebody for that, not mine. I was straightening up a record and a story.
We're, we're just, yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not being under- understood or the, you know, this in the context of a larger picture is, is just being glossed over. And just, I, I have, in my observation and canvassing and, and working with partners, you know, it's just perpetual harm, perpetual harm. And I, I want it to stop. Uh, it's, it's going to continue to be a, a strain on staff to implement our 2040 plan. That, that's, that's my observation uh, and interactions. And you, you can go through the history. I mean, that, that, there's a on a public record. Um, I just, and, and I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to harm any individual. I just want the, the divisiveness, the, the polarization to, to stop so that we can productively move forward. And, and this to me was just a testament to uh, a historic problem. And, and I, I, I join council with the aim of, of being a blunt object to a, a bad culture that I walked into. And I'll, I'll go, I'll, you know, go down it, into my grave and, and this term to, to break that bad code. I just can't, the city can't stand for it and I won't. And so we, I'll just suspend this and trust that my colleagues will catch up.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Schimmel. City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just a couple of updates. Public Works and Light and Power uh, have had separate meetings with the Bonneville Power Administration. And I do have some good news to report here. Thanks largely in part to uh, Keith Horman, our Director of Light and Power, and Greg Robertson, our Director of Public Works. Uh, BPA assigned a project manager to the Highway 47 and Fern Hill project. Uh, there was a pole that was uh, initially kind of blocking construction and causing delays in the timetable. Uh, the project manager has notified the city that they've order, ordered poles for that intersection to relocate the ones that are currently in the way. Uh, and it looks like they're going to have a spring outage to relocate those poles. So short story is, is it appears as though that project at Fern Hill and Highway 47 is back on track. And so thank you largely to the council and to staff working collaboratively to get her to get that done. And I'm very happy to report that's a, we've probably gained back close to a year, if not more than that. So thank you for your assistance with that. Um, also a shout out to Eddie Littlefield. Eddie has been managing our information technology. Um, and we've secured a contract with Structured. And we're just making lots of improvements, whether it's our criminal justice information system, our Windows 11 upgrades, server patching, re- replacing the existing servers in City Hall and at Light and Power. We're just making really good strides in our IT department. So I wanted to give a shout out to Eddie for that. Um, likewise with our GIS uh, system, our Geographic Information Services System, Keith Horman, um, who was appointed as managing GIS in the interim, uh, also has been doing a wonderful job. We put out a request for proposals for GIS services. This was talked with the budget committee and with council. What we're looking at is trying to map not only our light and power, which is currently in the system, but also our sewer storm water and some zoning applications, and then also try to get some of those online. So we're expecting proposals back sometime in November, December. So stay tuned for more on that. Uh, also uh, Chiefs Ryman uh, and Gearing have provided information to communications. One of the council's objectives was to have a dashboard that showed public response times on the website. Um, and that essentially would have kind of two measurements. One was the response time and then two, the number of incidents that we were having for critical responses for both fire and for police. Happy to report that all of the data is there. Uh, it's now just a matter of kind of taking that data and putting it onto the website in a very kind of readable and usable format for the public. So uh, look for more on that soon. Uh, from Community Development, Development Code Amendments, this is our kind of annual process for Development Code Amendments. Uh, they're going to the Planning Commission on November 17th. Uh, we do plan to have a work session with the city council on November 24th to talk about those possible code developments. Excuse me, um, code amendments, uh, Development Code Amendments on November 24th. So look for more on that, more on that. Uh, Public Works Administration, uh, building and, and re- and repair shop is moving forward. Uh, it's going really well. Uh, the project is working on utility line installation and foundation work. Um, and that's moving forward. Couple announcements about the library. The Gathering of the Groups, that's the Friends of the Library and Library Foundation uh, is Sunday, November 9th. It's an annual event. And also um, uh, I was uh, pleased to attend the uh, annual volunteer recognition dinner for the library on October 22nd. There were approximately 60 people there. Uh, and it was great to see uh, the Teen Library Council attend. There must have been uh, There must have been probably 10, maybe 12. It was great to see. And then last, but certainly not least, Light and Power has completed the environmental review and the land use process for the city's low income, for the solar project to assist our low income assistance program. We are kind of double checking with Housing and Urban Development on the congressional funds that we received, thanks in large part to Senators Merkley and Wyden and Congresswoman Bonamici. So, once we verify those capital funds, then we can look at putting out a final design and a construction contract on that. So, with that, that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Jesse. Would it be appropriate, or can we write Bonneville a thank you note? Is that inappropriate? I just think that we wrote them a note saying, hey, this is our priority, so we should follow back up and say thank you.
Yeah, I think some type of note to BPA, just thanking them for their collaboration and attention, would be well advised.
Yeah. And, okay, then I'll go through my stuff. So, on Wednesday, on the 22nd, while Jesse attended the library volunteer appreciation, I attended the last Civic Academy meeting. And again, I know I said this earlier, I just think that Stephanie and Joyce did a really good job. And then each of our department directors did a really good job. So, last week, Wednesday, was Light and Power. And Light and Power, they've created this safety truck that they can take different places that shows like what happens when a balloon touches a live wire, what happens like when it's on the ground and something else like, like boom, fire, 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 everywhere. And then they put people up in the bucket truck. They just really went all out to prove that their department is better than the fire department. That was just a bonus on top, cherry on top. But it was really to like engage our community. And that's what I heard from a couple of the participants, was that they really enjoyed how hands-on the activities were, and they really felt like they got to do a lot of cool things. So, again, thank you to all of our city staff who worked on that. And then especially Stephanie and Joyce, who, I mean, put that together for the first time. And I think next year will be even better. Because, right, like that was the first draft, second draft. It will keep getting better. As Counselor Martinez said, our 37th, or our sister city relationship has been 37 years old. And so we had another student delegation. They were here Wednesday through Sunday. I just, Counselor Martinez did a great job summarizing that. But I want to just give another shout out to the host families. Counselor Schimmel was one of them, who opened up their homes and get people places and show them a really good time. And then our Sister City Committee, who are all volunteers and are looking for additional members that plan the activities, work with UCC to get a shuttle bus and all those good things, and the Chamber. And a big shout out to the Chamber, too, who is also a contributing partner. I met with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. That's my high school student group that advises me on Tuesday, the 21st. And they are looking for volunteer opportunities this season. So, and they were also wondering if the library was gonna do their open house the first weekend in December. Counselor Valenzuela, or Council President Valenzuela, if you could check with Library Commission or Colleen to see if they can have a table. Last year, they made Christmas cards and deliver them to the senior, like, centers around town.
I believe they will.
They will have it on, so maybe they can have a table again. So, yeah, if you are on a board, if you could ask your Board and Commissions or other partners, like Chamber, I see Evelyn in here, you have a group of about 12 high school students who are looking to be out in the community. That was their work plan for this year, is more volunteering. I don't know, Pacific, any of those things are great for us. And that brings me to another question. Three of them are seniors and have asked me for letters of recommendation. And I think, per council rules, I need to get consensus from you to be able to use City Letterhead. If I could have used the Forest Grove City Letterhead in writing their recommendations for college. That would be very, yeah.
College.
Okay, cool, thanks. And then the other thing, speaking of them, is that there is money in the budget for some of our youth, or either our Youth Order and Commission members or MIAC members to attend the NLC conference. And so I was wondering if Jesse, did you have a chance to look at the budget? Like, is it two or three? And then, how do we go about that? It'd be nice if we could get those applications out soon.
I was able to look at the budget. So, currently in the budget, there's enough sufficient funding for three students to attend NLC for this fiscal year.
Did you say two or three?
Three.
Okay, and then, and the chaperone?
And the chaperone, yes.
Okay. So, I think PAC, the Public Arts Commission, has one student rep. We just want to make sure that it goes out to everyone at the same time. So, like, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, does forestry have a student rep? Anyways, maybe like Joyce could be in charge of-
Sure.
Also getting it to me for the MIAC would be great.
Okay.
And then I want to circle back to this Mayor's Innovation Project to see if there, if you guys had a chance to look at it. I've wanted to reach out to them a couple of times in the last week about some of the things going on. To get, because if you remember, you can utilize their staff and resources. But then I have felt guilty because they're a very small group, and they have a small staff, and we're not a member. So, I was just wondering. It's a 12, it's $1,250 annual fee, and it gives you access to their staff, resources, conferences. And I'm just wondering if you guys had a chance to look at that, and if you're in favor of that? I see one heading on, two heading off. Yeah. Well, I didn't know if you were saying yes, because you were like in your email. You were asking questions. So, Jesse, do you know how much we, I asked Jesse to bring this back to you. How much, was your question about how much NLC and LOC?
Well, just, I wasn't sure if you were asking us for money, and I thought maybe there is already money in effect.
Yeah, no, it's because there are like, no, well, according to Jesse, I need your consent.
The way the process has worked for memberships is the City Council would pass a resolution authorizing the membership. And then the budget would follow. Once the council has made a determination to sign up with a particular entity as a member, then that gets built into the budget framework for the ensuing years, unless council would like to discontinue the membership.
Very cool, so we'll bring that back. I feel like there's consent. We'll bring it back for a resolution. It's really a very small, like what you get. Then just a couple of friendly reminders, that in December, we like, we had consensus to have the council retreat the first Monday, December 1st. So, it'll be a four-hour meeting, 5:30 to 9:30. So, please prioritize that. And then we'll have only, then we have just one council, sorry, I should speak in the microphone. We have one council meeting in December, on December 8th, the following week. And then you'll have the rest of that month off until our first meeting in January.
What time did you say again?
For the council retreat?
Yeah.
5:30. I believe, right? 5:30 to 9:30? I think we just kept it like basically the same as our normal council meetings. And I think that's all I have. So, I'm gonna adjourn this council meeting, but we have a work session following. So, meeting adjourned. To go, but no, this is our membership. Question of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on liquor license process. And no public comment will be taken, and the council will take no formal action. And our city recorder, Mariah Woods, is gonna present.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your time tonight, counsel. I'm here to speak to you about liquor licenses. We have a fairly straightforward agenda, so I'm gonna jump right in. The primary 2040 action item that's been identified as being tied to this is 1.6, strengthen the city's partnership with local small businesses to support local distribution and entrepreneurship. The purpose of this work session is to consider revisions to the city's liquor licensing process. Staff has received feedback from local businesses that the timeline of the current process can be an obstacle to conducting business in Forest Grove. And it has additionally been identified as a strain on staff resources. As some background, the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission, OLCC, is responsible for the issuance of liquor licenses in the state of Oregon. Statutes do allow local governments to make recommendations that the OLCC may take into consideration for granting or refusing a license. This is kind of an important clarification, because the city does not issue liquor licenses. The city can make a recommendation on whether they believe that OLCC should or should not, but OLCC has ultimate decision, ultimate review over that. So, local government has 45 days from when notice is given to respond and must have valid basis for adverse recommendation. The city's current process for making recommendations is laid forth in the city's Code of Ordinance, Section 110.070 through 1999. Unfavorable recommendations are only considered valid if they adhere to the refusal bases enumerated in relevant statutes and administrative rules. So, OLCC has very specific rules for when they're allowed to deny or reject a license. And so if the city issues an adverse recommendation, it has to adhere to one of those bases. This is a non-exhaustive list of some of those reasons. And I do want to note that all of these kind of have caveats. So, on the last one, it says license premises will be located within 500 feet of certain types of facilities. But in order for that to apply, those facilities have to prove or argue essentially that that license being in effect there would impact their ability to offer their services. So, and unfavorable recommendations are not considered valid if they're based on things like parking limitation, traffic, zoning issues, even things like saturation. So, if the city feels that there's too many of those types of businesses in that area, OLCC does not consider that a valid basis for an adverse recommendation. We're gonna go into the current process. I have three main categories for this. One is for a new or a change of ownership application. These are, so the change of ownership is usually if there's an existing license in place or existing business, and they're selling to someone else. That's most of the new ones that we receive. And then new is obviously for an entirely new business. So, for that process, the application and payment is submitted to the city recorder, staff checks for valid city business license or an application for a city business license. We forward it to the police department for a background check and for the police chief's recommendation. And then it's then brought to the council for final action. If it's favorable, a favorable recommendation from the chief, it's just added to the consent agenda. And unfavorable is scheduled as a public hearing. Once it's approved, if it is approved, then it goes back to the applicant for them to submit to OLCC. We have a three to four week estimate timeframe for this. The longest I've seen is five weeks, and that was due to the council being in their kind of summer recess. There is a $100 fee for the new license and $75 for a change, which is capped by state statute. As far as this, I, oh, I was kind of more related to the last side, sorry. The, in speaking with the police chief about this process, he let us know that in his entire time in making these recommendations, he's only recommended that one license not be granted due to the history of the person applying. And OLCC did still grant that license. So, they do, again, have ultimate say in that. The next process is that for annual renewals. This is the one that is primarily more of a strain on staff resources. The OLCC sends a renewal notice to the city recorder every year, staff checks for valid city business licenses, and then mails notices to those businesses, because they have to submit to us a new background check form. Those applications and payment are submitted to me, and then it gets sent to the police department for review. They make the recommendation, and then it is again brought before the city council. The numbers for renewals have remained pretty consistent. So, we had 55 the last two years and 54 the year before that. It's a $35 renewal fee, again capped by state statute, which I buy my assessment. I guess we haven't had an official fee assessment. But that is capped by state statute, and I would not say that it generally covers the staff time for the renewals. The last process is for special events. I do want to make the distinction that this is different than an event permit. These are just special event liquor licenses. The process for this is applications and payments are submitted to the city recorder, staff checks for a valid city business license. If they're not a business in the city with a current city business license, they're required to obtain a temporary business license. And then I sign them and return them to the applicant. I processed, I don't have an exact number, but it was around 110 in 2024, was when I had the most complete numbers, which sounds like a lot, but there are 40 just for Forest Grove Uncorked. And they each have to submit separate permits for that. It's $20 for a special event fee and then an additional 35 for a temporary business license fee. Of those 210, I would say 90 to 100 of them are for community events. So, things like the Uncorked or Oktoberfest. Very few of those are for private events. So, then ask just some comparisons for other cities in Oregon. Cities where the city manager or designee are authorized to make recommendations directly to OLCC are Hillsboro, Gresham, Eugene, Salem, Kaiser, and Troutdale, or Troutdale. And then, the only responsive city that the council still makes the decision is Seaside. Cities that don't require background checks for renewals, not and don't include renewals on the council agenda, are listed, and none of the cities surveyed conduct background checks for renewals of licenses. So, there's still background checks for the initial application, but not every year. Bend is the only of the cities that responded that includes liquor license renewals on the council agenda. And they do it just as a way to notify the public and give them a chance to comment. Special events licenses are for the most part processed administratively, as we do. But most cities, or all the cities who responded, do not require business licenses for them. So, for discussion, discussion, staff is asking the city council to consider the following recommend, updates to Forest Grove's liquor license process. The first is to authorize the city manager or designee to make favorable recommendations to OLCC for new or change of ownership applications. We estimate that this would take that process for a new applicant from three to four weeks to one to two. So, that would pretty significantly lower that. What most cities in this case do is either give the option for, if there is an adverse recommendation, that that automatically goes before the council, or the applicant can have the option to appeal to the council before that adverse recommendation is submitted. The next recommendation is, again, for the city manager or designee to be authorized to make favorable recommendations for renewals. So, again, this would just allow us to not have the renewals on the council agenda. The city manager or designee would be allowed to just submit those directly to the OLCC. In addition to that, we're recommending removing the background check requirement for annual renewals. As again, this does take a lot more work for staff. Often what cities will do in this case, or sometimes, is have the police, when the OLCC sends that list of renewals, that list gets sent to the police chief, and they can flag any that have had persistent issues, if there's been a lot of problems and at that business that fall under those valid bases for an adverse recommendation. The police chief can just flag those and send those to the city manager. And again, that would go through that process of public hearing. And then finally, removing the business license requirement for special event liquor licenses. The business license more than doubles the fee that the business, that applicants are paying to have those special events. And that is just more of a deterrent. And again, a little bit more processing time for staff. So, I'm open to council feedback.
Okay, any questions for Brian?
I do have a question, Mayor. So, the background check, if we remove that, right?
Only for renewals. So, there would still be a background check if they, when they first apply.
But for renewals, a lot of things can happen within a year, right?
Yeah.
So, what you described would be having like an informal check, background check done, or, you know, yearly check done by the chief.
Yeah, it would be more, in that case, it would be more based on if things have been happening at the business. Because obviously, they have the knowledge and the records to know if there's been a lot of, you know, if there've been a lot of those valid bases, the issues happening at the business. the, the issues happening at the business. So, it wouldn't be the background check aspect.
All right, but it would be selected according to that, meaning that there could be some businesses that would not have this background check? Because there haven't been any issues that the police has heard of, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not in agreement. I think a background check is important. And I'm sorry, I'm not to give staff more work, really. I am so sorry, because I don't like doing that, but I think background checks are important.
Yeah, I, I think that there's still a background check initially, correct?
Yes, but I mean, on a yearly.
Like every year?
Well, is that what they're saying here, that they're, they're getting rid of the?
Yeah.
Of the yearly renewal background?
Yeah, and can you go, can you swap? Who's running the PowerPoint? Are you running the PowerPoint? Even up here, he's doing both, all your jobs, okay. But so, yeah, can you go to municipalities that have? No background checks for renewals not included on council agendas, Hillsboro. I mean, I guess, I'm wondering, the, the majority of comparables don't do that. And even for me as a, I mean, even for me as a teacher, as like a public employee that has 13 year olds, like my background check is before I get hired. I don't go and get a background check every year I teach.
Yeah, but this is distributing some goods to the community, right? It's to sell things, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, with that being said, even if somebody didn't pass a background check, can OLCC still give them their liquor license? So, it's kind of a moot point there, like when it comes to that. You know what I mean? So, no matter what we decide, OLCC has the final say. So, whether we do a background check or not, they can, OLCC can say whatever and still do liquor license.
Right, I don't know that for certain, though, right? It's a possibility that they are, there is a high likelihood that they would approve it.
They can, they can, OLCC can do whatever they want at this.
Yeah.
So, whatever we decide on a background check is null and void, because they get the final say. So, it might make us feel warm and fuzzy to do it, but it's not necessarily doing anything when they have final say over it.
So many imperfect things about this overall system, you know, and this I find to be one of them. When it comes to selling liquor or something else, you know, I don't know. I just tend to be a little bit more strict on things like that. But that's just me, you know, in my opinion.
I would agree with you. I would agree with, I would agree with that statement. Like, whenever I volunteer, because I don't teach, but I have to, I had, I just had a background check today with school district, because I coach, so I have to have that every single year. And I get that, but what this is saying, what OLCC does is different. So, they can give the license no matter what the background is.
So, basically, we've never had any, any power. Basically, we've never had.
We get the, essentially, that's, I mean.
Ever been a recommendation? I mean, I, I just, we have a state licensing board. So, what we're doing is not only doesn't matter, it's a redundancy of something that doesn't matter. So, like, we have a licensing board by the state. It's like, the city wouldn't recommend nursing licenses. You're licensed by the state. We have a body that does this already. And so, I find these things completely redundant. And also, like you said, the only time we've ever had an adverse recommendation, it was overruled by OLCC, because they have their own process.
Well, you know, that, that, yeah, if you put it that way, that it is redundant, and we've never had any power, it was vicious, right? Then, okay, I understand, and it's sad, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if it streamlines the process and allow, I mean, I, I think what everyone said is true, like, I'm okay with this. I feel like it makes sense to move in this direction. But, does anyone, a real, I mean?
No, OLCC changed to an online system called CAM, and it is ridiculously fast. Now, it used to be back in the day, it was like, it would be a five to six week turnaround. And now, it's like a couple of days at most. So, this, I mean, that's what you get when you get the businesses that put in their liquor license. They seriously type it in, fill out the forms, it's sent, and then they have to wait on us to do it. And so, they're, we're, they're waiting for like four or five weeks or whenever it gets put on their agenda. And so, they're just sitting here, turning their wheels, waiting for it when OLCC has basically already approved it.
Yeah, Council.
There's been several businesses that I've talked to in the downtown that have had that, that same problem, especially when they find out or they've been invited to an event last minute for whatever purpose. And, and we're kind of the, we're the bottleneck.
I mean, I did two liquor licenses last, probably like not even a month ago, and they were done within 24 hours. It's super, super fast now. So, it's like we should keep up with what OLCC is doing and kind of move as fast as we possibly can.
Oh, yeah, I think there's consensus.
So, for next steps, this does require an ordinance, as it will need some code changes. The, so the staff, with a review of city attorney, will draft that language. OLCC does typically review those revisions to make sure that, that they approve the process that we, that we want to go to. So, then staff will return once we have that approval with an ordinance for council consideration at a duly noticed public hearing.
Well, thank you for bringing this to us.
So much.
Okay, this work session is adjourned. We're out 39 minutes early.